Oh, now he means business.
Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here. Could we stand for a moment a silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please? Amen.
Your pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interview for the parking and skywalk system board of trustees, Anthony Gall. Anthony, come up and tell us a little bit about why you want to serve.
No, thank you. Hi, Anthony Gall, work for the Sioux City School District. I work at the Sioux City Career Academy right now. Reason for having interest in this board is we are a very large user of the Skywalk system with thousands of people every week going through their interactions. We have quite frequently with the public and looking out for the safety of our students and staff. So that's the biggest, the biggest reason that I came forward interested in this, to represent the school district in this facet.
Questions?
No question. I think that's a great reason. You're very ingrained in it and you have good reason to want to serve and perhaps bring some ideas. We're always looking for a new perspective.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for applying.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Good to see you, man.
Yep, thank you.
We'll go to the regular agenda. The consent agenda today is three through 13C. Consider those items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by the council member. You want to speak on an agenda item, please come up as I read that item. If you want to speak on, not on the agenda, come up under citizen concerns. Remember to always state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Reading of the October 7th and 2nd and 7th City Council minutes. Four is a motion appointing Kathleen Michelson to the Library Board of Trustees. Five is a motion accepting the Environmental Advisory Board Annual Report. Six, a resolution accepting donations for the period of July through September. Seven is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Zenith Water Plant New Riverfront Well Project. Is this just a regular well? I'm sorry. Is, is this just a regular well?
It's a new well.
No, I understand that, but it's not, it's not a collector. It's just a, and they cost that much now. Wow. Eight are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing an application for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. B is a resolution authorizing fire rescue to accept a local fire protection and emergency medical services grant for smoke alarm installation. Mayor, I just want to thank the Sioux City Fire Rescue for this program. It's an excellent program and citizens should take advantage. If you don't have a smoke alarm, call the fire department and they'll install it. It's just really a great program to have in Sioux City. Thank you. And they also, if you call an ambulance to your house and they're not real busy, they'll put new ones in your house as well at the same time. Not for me, for a family member. Items C1 to C4 are resolutions approving continuum of care applications for planning, project, coordinated entry, homeless management, information system, and permanent housing and rapid rehousing grant funds. Nine are actions relating- Mayor, I want, I wanted to say on those, on those items. Go ahead. I, Jill, is Jill here? Great job on keeping these going. It's, it has become more and more important as we go each day that everyone knows what the city of Sioux City does for the homeless population. And the first grant that you have there, well, you have one, you have four grants, and the one that really caught my eye was the rapid rehousing grant. And that will help with, I'm sorry, I tried to get organized on this, but that'll help with four households for four Section 8 vouchers. So that would be four households for what you're asking for on that grant. Am I reading that correctly?
So Jill Wondershade, Neighborhood Services Manager. I believe we landed on 11 households and what we're applying for, or 15 households, I'm sorry, four with children, 11 without. And this would be a new grant for us. We currently do administer a rapid rehousing program, and that's funded with Department of Treasury funds through the state of Iowa. And so we're always looking for additional funding sources to continue on with programs after our funding sources end. And so this is an example of trying to secure a new funding source in order to continue that program after next year when our funds expire.
I think that's excellent. I just want to thank you for staying on top of these grants for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contract. A is a resolution approving a defense and indemnification agreement for the Parks and Recreation Foundation. Mayor, I think I probably should abstain on that one, conflict of interest, since I'm working with the foundation. Okay, thank you. B is a resolution granting a grading permit to hog, hedge, degrade, and create a new retention basin at 3701 South Lewis Boulevard. B is a resolution approving amendment number one to the service provider agreement with Mark Alvinicious for the West 19th Street and Riverside Boulevard Sanitary Sewer Project. D is a resolution approving three GIS live subscription and professional service master agreement and order number 01 for design software and services. E is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Thompson Solutions for a fire station number one generator project. I need to abstain conflict of interest. F is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with McClure Engineering for the 11th Street Reconstruction Project. Mayor, just a quick question. Gordon, is the redecking of the bridge, that can be, can that be done at the same time, or would that be done at a later time?
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer, that'll probably have to be done a little separately. For one, we don't have the funding for 11th Street. And two, that the contractors would be in conflict with each other.
Oh, I see. So, so you'll do the reconstruction, or you'll do the street?
We'll do the street first, yeah.
First, followed by-
If we could time it right, we'll definitely do that, but most likely it won't happen.
Okay, thank you. C is a resolution approving a contract, a black roof for terminal roof replacement project phase two at the airport. H1 is a resolution approving a natural gas sales agreement with Wood River Energy to provide natural gas to various city facilities. H2 is a resolution approving a metered gas transportation contract with Mid-America Energy to designate Wood River Energy as the city's agent for assessing energy usage at various city's facilities. H3 is a resolution approving a natural gas sales agreement with Wood River Energy to provide natural gas to the wastewater treatment plant. Ten are actions- Have we had this before? This, this kind of a, I mean, has it been with the same company, or is it just a- Who owns Wood River? I'm guessing Warren Buffett, but-
Spruval, who is purchasing manager, Craig Gerch from Wood River is here to answer any questions on the program.
Good afternoon. Craig Gerch with Wood River Energy. I'm our regional sales director. There are six private investors, three managing partners. One of those managing investors is from Iowa, three are from Nebraska, and two are from Colorado.
But we've used, we've used Wood River then in the past. I just don't recall.
Yeah, we have had them in the past. I believe it's the last six years, I believe. Initially, we did it for one year at a time, and then we did do an agreement formally, everything out. I did an RFP last time, and this is the second RFP we've done.
Okay.
November of 2016 is when the initial contract started.
Oh, thank you.
And then we've reviewed with Spiro and his team annually, and then most recently with an RFP. I believe the new term will be a three-year term.
Correct.
Nothing is changing from the previous contract. Languages all staying the same. Pricing structure is all staying the same. But the reason to be a gas transportation customer is you have the ability to control your gas costs while still using Mid-America Energy Company to deliver the gas and manage your meters. So at the end of the day, you smell gas, you're not getting gas. Your facility's still calling Mid-American. We work hand-in-hand with Mid-American on the back end to ensure gas is being delivered to the city of Sioux City. At the end of the day, we have to follow a ton of Iowa guidelines as well as Mid-American Energy Company guidelines.
So it's a cost saving?
It is. So the contract that was presented to Spiro and was presented to you individuals is a guaranteed savings contract. So we'll guarantee that every month that you purchase your gas from Wood River, that we're going to be 5% less than what you would pay with Mid-American. The caveat to that is, is not only are you saving 5% on the cost, we also cover or eliminate from you guys all of the gas transportation administrative fees, which equate to about a $25,000 a year additional savings that we don't necessarily recognize in the program. But we don't pass through those administrative costs that come standard with gas transportation customers.
Okay, so this will be locked in for three years till November 30th of-
Correct.
2027.
That is correct, yes.
But you're, but you're not doing like some companies do where you actually go out and contract way ahead for us.
So we do offer the ability to hedge gas through fixed prices, through, you know, NYMEX basis type layering, very complex buying. Historically, the city has not had an appetite for the risk involved, specifically from a-
Huge, huge stake that I've argued for 25 years around here.
You know, it's-
Huge mistake.
It's one of those things where in years that you should have hedged, you didn't in years where you shouldn't have hedged, you did. We believe in consistency, cost certainty, cost control, reliability. A lot has changed in the natural gas market in the last-
That's why we hire an expert like you to-
Well, I sure hope so, yes.
Help buy it out there on the market.
Yeah, so, you know, the utilities regulated, correct, so they don't recognize any profit on the commodity that you're purchasing. All of their profits come from the distribution of the gas. Their incentive is to ensure that customers are happy with the rates that they pay. We can be more effective in the way that we purchase gas and return, provide you guys guaranteed lower cost. The addition to that, when you come onto gas transportation, historically, you've been exposed to market-priced events, Winter Storm Yuri, Winter Storm Elliott, most recently is January of '24. Our contract guarantees you're not going to be impacted by those pricing events when gas hits $350 on a day. So it is a full requirements contract that protects you from, you know, contracted volumes, overs and unders, and eliminates all of that risk to the city.
So the 5% seems pretty safe.
It's, it's our most basic, simple program. I've, I've talked to Spiro in the past about trying to look at more complex buying for the city, as we do with other cities and government entities. But at the end of the day, it's taxpayer dollars that you're dealing with. And if you can simply assure your taxpayers that they're paying a lower cost for government cost, it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. But there are cities that are actually doing what I'm saying.
We, we have several, yes.
Okay.
Some years you win and some years you lose.
I-
Problem is, is historically-
Correct, I get it.
Historically, you win more years than you lose. Unfortunately, since Winter Storm Yuri in 2018, when it froze from North Dakota to Texas, Utah to Ohio, customers who take that risk without direct protection lose more times than they win. And for, for you guys, it's not worth the risk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
A is a resolution authorizing a payment to Mid-Continental Restoration for the Tyson Events Center appointing sealant project. B is a resolution approving fund transfers for September. C is a motion approving the list of claims, expenses, and receipts for September. Purchasing, A is a resolution approving a renewal option one for the purchase order awarded to Brent Tag Great Lakes for citric acid. B is a resolution approving renewal option two for the purchase order awarded to Hawkins for chlorine. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Communications Technologies for four sets of open gate weapons detection systems. C2 is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Communication Technologies for training of the open gate weapons detection system. D is a resolution authorizing the purchase of general liability and excess liability insurance from Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services. Twelve are beer and liquor licenses. Thirteen are boards commissioning committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? How are we voting today?
Electronic.
Thank you. Passes 5014, a hearing ordinance vacating a portion of Chautauqua Park, the petition to the city of Sioux City. I'll move that. Second. Anyone to be heard? The public hearing is now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Have we had their requested conditions?
What's that?
Have we had their requested conditions?
Wade, were there requested conditions by the Parks Board related to this property?
Wait, Jill, planning. The conditions for the Parks Board was that there would be an Army Corps approval. That's pretty standard as far as all development that goes along any type of waterway or in the floodplain, et cetera. There would probably be additional restrictions with this, but they're working through the company with that, so.
Something about a tree barrier, too?
Yeah, so if you, if you go out there, there is a pretty organized, kind of, well, tree lines along where the, the trail is that would, that's to the west. And then also there's a fairly decent tree line to the south, and then also along the river into the north. So just maintaining some of that, which would come back through the site plan review that P&amp;Z is requested.
Okay, all right. I remember reading that, so.
So we need to include those conditions in our-
They're already recommended.
Yeah, if you, if you would like to put that as part of your recommendation to have P&amp;Z review that site plan, that would be fine.
The ordinance as presented does not have the conditions included, so that would need to be an amendment and a request to add by the council.
Okay, I'll move the conditions. Second.
Wade, one question I had along with that, just while you're here and while we're thinking and when it gets kicked back to P&amp;Z. I have been out in that parking lot quite a bit from back when I used to go to a lot of those slow pitch games.
Mm-hmm.
And I would just worry about what the increase in traffic will look like. I mean, obviously, I think it's, it's a good, it's a win-win type of situation to utilize that area that's maybe underutilized now and bring in to spur new business. I understand all of that. But I do think it is a beautiful area of trail, and we've done a lot to try to connect that area all the way up through connecting over to the Expo Center and things like that. So I just want to make sure that the integrity of the trail and safety of the riders and people that are utilizing it is still thought of.
There would probably need to be some concrete work that would be done to not only, to reduce or eliminate the possibility of there being rocks up onto that trail and/or looking at the thickness of that trail as far as-
Yeah, trucks, trucks going across and forth. And whether that includes the paving of that parking lot or the paving of that area so that you're not going to have that, because I agree, you're going to then have a lot of traffic, you know, increased traffic in an area that you don't really otherwise see. I mean, more than what there is.
Yeah, I think they're anticipating maybe five to 10 trucks a day, so it'd be fairly minimal.
Not too bad.
Yeah.
Great. Well, as long as we're considering the safety, and I don't know what time those trucks will be there, and it's all pretty visible right there where they're going to be crossing, so I don't think you have to worry about it too much. But as long as P&amp;Z can be on top of some of those assurances, I think the trail system would really benefit from that.
Mm-hmm.
On the amendment, we're on the conditions.
Moore.
Hi.
O'Kane.
Hi.
Shaner.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Waters.
Hi.
Anyone else be heard? Hearing is closed.
I don't have it lit up on mine.
Are you going to move? I, I closed the vote.
Oh.
Because we amended it.
Now on the regular motion, is that what we need?
We are doing electronic? This is on 14, correct?
Yes.
Passes 50. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Second.
O'Kane.
Hi.
Shaner.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Waters.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi. I move second and third. Second.
Shaner.
Hi.
Scott. Waters.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
O'Kane.
Hi.
15 is a hearing ordinance rezoning a portion of Chautauqua Park. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Yeah, that's where they would.
I would add that, I would include it as not as well.
You want me to? Those conditions should have been on 15, right? And not 14. Yeah, I'm on the vacation. Do we need them, we need them on the rezoning?
Oh, on the rezoning. Yeah, let's, let's do it on the rezone.
Andrew, why aren't you up here telling us what to do?
Wade, you should have told us.
I'll amend the motion to include the conditions of- Second. The amendment.
Well, at least we're thorough. No one can argue that part.
They will not be-
Consistency here.
Scott.
Hi.
Waters.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
O'Kane.
Hi.
Shaner.
Hi.
Now on the regular motion, the hearing is closed. Are you going to revote, or what are we doing here? Motion is amended, so can you set us back up? Yeah.
We'll do motion in a second. I'll call it.
Okay. Yeah, we've already moved it, yeah.
Sorry. Waters.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
O'Kane.
Hi.
Shaner.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it. Second.
Moore.
Hi.
O'Kane.
Hi.
Shaner.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Waters.
Hi.
Move second, third. Second.
O'Kane.
Hi.
Shaner.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Waters.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi. 16 is a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the digestion and high-strength waste receiving improvement project. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing's now open. Anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5017 is a resolution selecting the construction manager at risk for the wastewater treatment plant facility plan improvement project phase one. I'll move that. Second. Request to amend it. What would that be?
There were three separate addenda that were included as part of, part of the RFP process. We have now separately noted those by date in the amended resolution, and staff would ask that it be changed to include those three additional dates.
I'll move the, move to amend. Second.
O'Kane.
Hi.
Shaner.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Waters.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi. Okay, on the regular, I've talked with, with the group, and my, my biggest fear is that that fee is awfully high. Now, they assure me that that's a negotiation that will occur, and I hope it is, because I'm all for Keywood having the job, but I'm also all for doing what we can to reduce that, because Wheat's and Journey obviously are really qualified contractors, the second people. So I hope that there is some negotiation that goes along with that, so.
Tom, I did have a clarifying question. I thought of it last night, but I didn't want to bother you on a Sunday. But when has that ever stopped me? So I apologize. But I did want to just have a conversation briefly. It seems that the overall bid is fairly close or similar. I understand that fee, you know, is a little, is, is higher, you know, substantially higher with Keywood. But I just wanted to talk about that this next step just allows us to enter that negotiation and have some of those conversations. Is that correct?
I'm Pingel, Utilities Director. Yes, Alex, that's correct. We're strictly just going into negotiations of the construction services, pre-construction services.
And it looked to me like when you look at the total calculations of the bid package, it is very similar in price. It was just the different breakdown as far as the, the phase service fee and then other, other articles that come into play here.
That's correct. They, they were all within 10% of each other.
So then I suppose, I mean, yeah, hopefully we're able to be successful with negotiation a little bit and talking about that fee and bringing that down. Because I agree with the mayor. I think they would do an amazing job here in our community, as would a number of these different organizations. But I think it's our own due diligence to be able to have those conversations and see if we can make sure that we're doing right by taxpayers as well, so.
That's the goal. Do what's right for our taxpayers. We'll bring those numbers back to you guys for approval. And if mutually the negotiations don't work, we'll move on to the next one, which is Journey and White's Construction.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thanks for the support.
Tom, you had your selection committee consisted of six of your staff members?
Six staff members and two design advisory committee meeting members as well.
Who were the two committee members? I'm just curious.
Bill Bradbury, he's here with us today, and Aaron Leiken, he's the city manager of Sergeant Bluff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, they're both engineers, so they know a little bit about it, that's for sure. So good. Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir. Voted, but go ahead, Mr. McGowan.
Well, there wasn't an invitation for the public to speak on that one, Mr. Mayor.
There isn't unless it's a hearing, sorry.
Well, what we want to share with you is in the criteria that we're-
One second. It was 5-0, but go ahead.
In the criteria that were presented, there were over 10, and less than 10% of this criteria was based on the cost. And of the organizations selected, on the scale of one to 10, they scored two out of a possible 10 points, when locally owned and operated organizations scored 10 on that same criteria. Chris McGowan, Siouxland Chamber of Commerce, 101 Pierce Street, we have very serious concerns about the cost of this, as many of you council members stated as well. 18 months ago, the mayor said this is the single most expensive project and undertaking the city has ever taken on. We think that far more attention must be paid to the cost of this project, and the criteria that were outlined for this selection, I think manifests that. Thank you.
And as we stated, that price will be negotiated before any final contracts are signed, so. All right, Green Valley and Floyd Golf Course presentation.
John Burns, Americanation Superintendent for Parks and Rec. Counsel, I just want to introduce Scott Harmelink. He is here to do his biannual presentation on behalf of the Green Valley Floyd Golf Courses.
Yep, thank you.
Good afternoon, counsel. Thank you for having me today. I have my biannual report broken down into basically three different sections here. You can see our balance sheet, and our P&amp;L statement is up to date through October 1 of this year. If you have any questions about any individual line item, I'd be happy to address those. If, if you look, things are, as I have reported the last few meetings, things are good. As I've stated before in previous meetings, you know, after COVID, things kind of changed for the golf business. It's a real shot in the arm. We have, we issued 300, or excuse me, 938 passes this year, which doesn't mean 938 people, but, so if you get a single pass, a car pass and a range pass, it's three passes, it's only, it's only one person. But that is, that is a record, and it continues to grow down there at Green Valley. As you can see-
Are those, oh, here we go. Sorry, buddy.
Nope, no problem.
I was looking for the page. I was looking for the page of that. Is that, looking at page one of ordinary income, right, where you're looking at the number of...
Are you looking in the balance sheet or the incomes or the profit and loss statement?
Uh, P and L, yeah.
Okay, one more time, Alex. What was your question?
Yeah, yeah, I think I'm looking at the right one.
Okay.
Yeah, because we got the total passes, season car passes, nine-hole. Yep.
Yes, on the income side there. You can see the total income this year through October 1, nearly 1.8 million, where it was about 1.65 last year, but you'll also see, just like everything else, it seems, our expenses have, will continue to go up, and they are going up. In lieu of that, we did decide to raise the rates at Green Valley about 10% across the board, and you'll see that on the, after the P and L statement, you'll see the breakdown for what we're charging this year for green fees at Green Valley and Floyd Park, and several other rates, including season passes, private car storage. All of those rates there are current, and again, they were increased about 10%. And even with that increase, I still believe that, you know, Green Valley is still maybe the most affordable golfing experience in town, and that is our mission statement, and we're, to me, that's more important than maximizing revenue, because our mission statement is to provide quality, inexpensive golf for the citizens and guests of Siouxland, so we're not near what West Front Creek is charging. I think we're less actually than Two Rivers also. On the final sheet that I have, as you know, we do what we can to make capital improvements down there, and just this year, we can go through these if you like, but it's around, right, about $100,000 in capital improvements that we've made this year. In addition to that, I think it's important that we give back to the community as much as we can. I have two outings down there at Green Valley each year, Sioux City Junior League outing and the First Tee outing, both of which organizations are important to me. I think they're very worthwhile, and we don't charge them a nickel. They collect their money for the people that want to play in the event. We buy the food. I prepare the food. We don't charge them anything, so we're proud to be able to do that for them. And...
I learned about that this year, that you prepared the food. I heard quite a few praises about you for...
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you.
Your league, so thank you for that, and that's a lot to them.
Of course. Appreciate that, thank you. Next year, we don't have it all planned out yet, but there is a need for more tree removal, in particular, hole number four at Green Valley. It's a difficult hole, but there's trees that were planted back when the golf course was built in the 60s, and sometimes you don't think of what that six-foot tree is going to do in 30 years, but it's on the backside of the water feature there, the water hazard, and unless you're a, unless you can really have the clubhead speed to move the ball and hit it high, it's difficult for the majority of my members to get over that tree, and it's making the hole, they have to change the way they play the hole because that tree is growing, and frankly, that tree, those trees should never have been built there, so our intention is to take down, there'll be four trees that will be taken down, and they're expensive. They're big trees. It costs, you know, 25, $3,000 per tree to take down, so.
Take them all down.
Pardon me?
Take all the trees.
Take all the trees down. I hear that a lot.
Come on.
Uh, we're also, we have a, the Green Valley pump is eventually probably all going to need to be replaced, but we're going to kind of break that into, break that into chunks, and it may run 75,000 or even more to just fix what we're going to fix this year, but...
Scott, I should come out to the course. Are you saying that there's a hole on Green Valley where you have water, and then you have a tree immediately behind, and then is the green on the other side of the tree, and you have to get up and down?
It's about 150 yards from there. The green is about 150 yards from that tree, but it wasn't that long. These trees are growing fast.
In the tee shot, you're supposed to clear the water and...
Correct.
I was 75 yards out the last time I played, so that tree doesn't bother me. I got others I'll take up.
I don't know if you...
You wouldn't hit it that far. You'd be fine.
Yeah.
That's right. Scott, what season is this for you now with us?
This is my 24th year at Green Valley, yeah.
Thanks for this report. It's really...
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a question? Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen concerns. Any citizen, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
How we doing today?
Good.
Good, buddy.
Keith Baker, 2101 Nash. I got a concern with your inspection department. I don't know where to start with this. Every time I go up there to discuss issues, they always refer me back to you guys. I think some of your inspection rules ought to be amended, so they tell me always to come back here to get the job done. And there's a lot of things going on in the city that I get burnt with. You know, I drive around quite a bit in town, and you always got to take paths around. A lot of these orange cones around, you always got to revert your path. You know that. And I see a lot of, lot of illegal things going on that should, people should get gigged for, but aren't. So I think things should change. How do I go about doing that?
Tell us what happened.
Huh?
Tell us what you're, be more specific about what you're talking about.
Well, for instance, cars parking in their front yards on gravel, which they shouldn't be, trailers in the front yard, which they shouldn't be, and inspection tries to say, well, we don't see them while they drive right by them. Well, that means they're not doing their job.
Those are normally handled on a complaint basis, so...
No, that's not true, Bob. That's what they try to tell me.
That's how they're normally...
But you know what? I got gigged once, and they said they drove through an alley and got me.
No, I didn't say that's the only way.
I had a trailer sitting in my backyard for over 12 years.
I didn't say that's the only way. I said they normally are.
And they said they drove through an alley and caught me, so...
They're normally handled that way, is what I said. Normally, not always.
And they drive by on the street, and you can't help but see it. So why aren't these people getting gigged for it? So call-in doesn't fly. They're not doing their job.
Okay.
I think they're picking and choosing on certain people. That's what I'm getting out of the whole deal. They're not doing, they're not following their own rules. Either they're going to follow the rules or throw the book out the window, one or the other.
Okay.
How do I go about changing things? Like I say, I had that extra trailer in my side yard behind the house. You know, years ago, there was an issue brought up in city council about having your vehicle behind the back of the house, which was fine, as long as it was a legally-plated vehicle. I remember this, years ago, it was brought up. You could have it in your side yard, as long as it was legally plated. Then all of a sudden, it's not legal. Why is that? I have a problem with that. And you know what? You go all over town, you see all kinds of, you know, if you get gigged once, it seems like you start noticing stuff like this. A lot. There's a lot of things out of whack that should be gigged. I could start turning in probably 500 complaints, but that's their business, what they do. The city's not doing their job. They're picking and choosing who they're going to gig. Either you gig them all, or you don't gig anybody. You got your choice. Or you start amending rules. What do you do? And they always refer me back to you guys. If you want to start amending these rules, here I am. What do I do?
Well, I guess you'd need to talk to Bob and Nicole and give them some ideas of what you want to amend.
You know, why not get the citizens together instead of having them do it, the people that it actually involves? Let's say you have somebody...
Because if you're going to rewrite an ordinance...
Let's say you have somebody with a boat, Bob, and somebody with a hover round and has two trailers, but yet has two vehicles that park in their driveway, legally-plated vehicles, that wants to sit on their property in their backyard. What are you going to do with them? Have to spend the money to get a rental unit? Why should that be? That shouldn't have, that shouldn't have to happen. You understand what I'm saying? Why should you take that away, that entertainment away from these people? You shouldn't have to.
I don't know. I'm telling you, if you want to change an ordinance, this lady here is in charge of that. If you don't want to meet with her, I don't know what to tell you.
And it's also, Keith, this important to clarify what you're proposing or what you would want to change. I mean, I understand your frustration that it feels like...
No, it's just, it's all over town. In fact, right across the street from me, they're living in the camper in their backyard. They got extension cords running to it. There's three people living in it. Inspections won't do a darn thing about it, and they've been called in on. That's just one, for instance. I come down, West 19th coming down here today, seven, seven things I drove by that were in violation of the city ordinance. Vehicles parked in the front yard on gravel illegally, and don't tell me they couldn't have caught them. They could have stopped and wrote them a violation.
And that's what I guess we're asking, is if you have a proposed amendment, you want us to not cite anyone, or you want us to instruct them to cite everyone, or that's what we're asking, is if you have a suggestion that then you can do that, you can let us know what that would be to change.
There could, you know, I've read city ordinances in Omaha and Sioux Falls. Sioux City always says they like to portray themselves pat under like Sioux Falls or Omaha, you know, let's form ourselves after these other cities. I've read their ordinances, and their ordinances let them do things like this, just as I referred to. Sioux City doesn't. Why is that?
I don't know. Again...
Somebody should know.
Well, I'm telling you, if you want to change some rules, you have to work with the city attorney, Keith. You're standing there telling us stuff, but you're not giving one specific example, and we're not going to change it here today.
Well, I'm just here to enlighten you guys.
Well, thank you for the enlightenment, but I'm telling you, if you want to change it, this legal department is where we have to start, because they're the ones that actually have to do the changing.
So what do I have to do?
I just said, make an appointment with Nicole and sit down with her and give her some ideas.
What kind of evidence? So how many people am I going to have to bring up to her office?
What I think the mayor is asking is that if you have proposed ordinance sections that you feel should be amended, I'll need to have those presented to me to see what it is exactly that you would like to change, because I can't, it isn't the amount of people you bring in or anything like that. I have to have specific suggestions related to the current language that you would like to have revised in conjunction with inspection services.
So am I going to have to take around a form with so many signatures or...
No. No, it doesn't require a petition. We will consider language changes that you would have or sections that you believe need to be revised. That's the information that we would need to start with.
So going up to, I'm done going up to inspection because they just throw a smokescreen at me. And they kind of pick and choose who they want to, who they want to gig anymore. And I think the reason why they don't go after this guy's house across the street because he's got a lot of money in Sioux City, that's why they don't mess with him. I'm not going to mention any names, but I know that's why they don't. They kind of leave hands off.
Okay, I'm suggesting you meet with Nicole and give her some ideas.
But I can't believe how many years that extra trailer mine was sitting in my side lot, and all of a sudden, it's not right.
Did this just happen?
Huh?
Did, was it just discovered, or...
Well, about, about six months ago.
Oh, okay.
All of a sudden, I got this, and then, last winter, we bought a recliner from Slumberland, you know, during the winter. We put it out back in my garage, and I keep my yard pretty clean. Set it out back in the garage. Week and a half later, we got this nasty letter from the city, threatening letter, we're going to find you. And I told the city inspector, I went up there, and I said, you know what? I said, look what the weather is out. I says, I'm going to get rid of it as soon as the weather straightens out. But no, they had to send this, threatening they're going to find me. Couldn't they have common sense and wait till the weather straightened out? Give me a chance to get rid of it before they sent me something like this? This is the kind of people I'm trying to deal with. What do you think about that?
I don't think we're going to handle your problem today, so I went way over on the amount of time, so again, I'd like you to work...
Yeah, here we go with the timing.
Well, because, because it's been, we've given you ample time to talk about your problem. We understand it. We're telling you how we want you to deal with it. Is there anyone else to be heard?
I'll make an appointment with you.
Thank you.
I'll stop up tomorrow, and would tomorrow be a good time, or...
You can speak with my legal assistant, and they will find a time on the calendar for an initial meeting. You can speak with my legal assistants and the department, and they will find time on my calendar. That will work.
I'll stop up tomorrow then.
Yes, I may not be able to meet with you tomorrow, but we can schedule an appointment.
Well, I'll make an appointment tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
That'll work.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Anyone else to be heard? Matthew.
Um, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day is today.
Julie.
I don't have anything today.
Alex.
Um, I was just going to point out that I went to the ribbon cutting for the Benson lofts last week. Just wanted to say it was a really great property and thankful for Nelson Construction and the work that they put into that. Was able to tour some of the units and see some of the different amenities that are being offered. I appreciate the underground parking, obviously, and then the dog park that, or the small kind of dog relief park area that they have there, but it just reinforced to me that, you know, how important green space is in our downtown. I think having Pearl Street Park there is nice, but any added reprieve, both for, I think, people to relax in, but also in today's day and age, a lot of people want to have pets and don't want to limit themselves to having to drive far distances to get their pets some exercise or some green space to play in, so I think that that continues to be of utmost importance to me at least, and especially when we're looking forward to the jail project or the law enforcement center. Not only how can we redevelop that property, I think, but also look for opportunities, whether it's there or otherwise, to incorporate more green space in our downtown is going to be important, but it was really a quality job, and it was exciting to see it, see it open and filling up. And then the planning convention is this week as well, so I'm looking forward to welcoming them. I didn't realize that the, was it the law enforcement or state patrol people were here, what, last week as well?
Iowa Police Association.
Police Association, yeah. We've had a number of different ones, so yeah. Looking forward to the planning. We're actually discussing a couple of different projects on the agenda, talking specifically about Sioux City, so I'm looking forward to hearing that discussion, ideas for future development and what we can do better planning-wise, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
Dan. Nothing further, thanks.
Move we adjourn. Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I'm going to go play land. No.
That one that we amended.
Got out of town that day.
No, I think actually it was fine.
No wonder you want to cut down all the trees, want to play land here.
Parks and Rec had conditions on the vacation.